Okay, thank you for your patience. We are opening this regular Board of Education meeting for June 22nd, 2023. And let's do our Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please lead us in the pledge to be Principal Dietrich? Thank you. That now takes us to our roll call vote. Clerk Coffee?
Present.
Wait, I'm not sure what. That's great, good.
Okay, you're all right?
Yeah. Trustee Pazadi.
I'm present.
Trustee Vinagis.
Present.
And Vice President Wong may be joining us virtually later, but I too am present. And announcements of actions taken in closed session. We have Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSEA, and Management. Information was received. And then we have Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Superintendent. And we mutually agreed to move the superintendent's evaluation to this meeting. And I'm happy to report that she has a positive evaluation. And we are grateful that you are here, Washington Unified, and for your leadership, especially this past year. Thank you very much, Dr. Hildreth. And that now takes us to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make one recommendation for action item P10, just to make sure we're proving things in needed order. If we could move item P10 to be placed above P5.
Perfect. So, action item P10 is moving up above 5. Are there any other changes? And can I get a motion to approve with the change?
I motion.
Okay, move by Clerk Coffee. Any other seconds?
Second amendment.
All right. Second in by Trustee Pazadi, and all in favor?
Aye.
I too vote aye. Okay. And we do not have anything under J this evening. So that takes us to our association reports. And we have WSTA President Doug Knapp. Welcome.
President Knapp, sorry to interrupt. The microphone's not on. If you can press the green button. Thank you.
That was planned, wasn't it? Happy summer. I, some of you don't have the summer now that I have, so I'm not trying to be rude. I'm only here for one reason tonight, and that is to briefly discuss, and I don't have a ton of analysis for you, but to discuss the results of the grand jury report on Yolo High School. That was recently released. On a number of occasions, I've come before the board to speak about Yolo continuation and everything that those students at Yolo continuation deserve. I think our most innovative campus should also be the one with the greatest need. And I'm really hoping we can move forward to make Yolo a modern and innovative campus that can help serve students that attend. I want to briefly discuss some of the items that were in the grand jury report so that we can just kind of review again. I'm not going to make much commentary on them, but I am going to bring them up because I think we have to talk about them and bring them into the light of the public. The grand jury report was submitted for concerns over safety regarding bullying, weapons, and communication. The grand jury report was released this week, and I want to start off by saying that it made a statement that acknowledged, and I agree with this, and I'm glad they say this, that teachers and administrators both have student interests at heart. And so that's good. There was nobody saying that, you know, there was any nefarious activities going on. However, there were some items that I think were really concerning. One was the identification that a lot of bullying is going on at Yolo. And it seems like the only consequence of the bullying is that the students being bullied are placed on independent study, and the bullies are continuing to attend. And I know, I know student rights, so I know how difficult to challenge that is, right? Because everybody's entitled to an education. But it's concerning to me when our students that are the victims of bullying are having to leave their place of education because it's not safe for them. And yet we find room for the bullies to stay. And I understand there's LCAP implications there, but I think that that's something we clearly need to look at. And it's not just at Yolo. It's a trend that we see elsewhere in our district. There was also reports of five episodes of violence and some weapons, including two knives. Their concern was also about lack of transparency in investigation with weapons. They found that people didn't understand what the results were, that the staff was not communicated with. And in fact, the grand jury requested from WUSD information regarding this. And according to the report, they never heard anything bad. So that's concerning. It sounds like the grand jury is experiencing some of the things that our staff is experiencing. I want to say, in result of some of these incidents, including weapons, there was a lack of transparency in regarding how the weapons have been handled. There was a lot of, a lot of staff who didn't feel that weapons were handled appropriately. There was a lot of dubious information flying around. And I would say the only consequence of those experiences was that teachers were disciplined, not students. Students, in some of these cases, students weren't even searched. Again, I'm not sure the grand jury got this information because the grand jury wasn't replied to with some of this. So there's a perception that whistleblowers are targeted for investigation because it was the very people who called out that there were weapons that had discipline acted against them. The other thing I wanted to mention, that in the handbook for Yolo, one of the things the grand jury reported is that there's absolutely no language regarding knives, although knives are much more likely to be brought to school than guns. But there's no, no, no language regarding knives for students coming in. And the grand jury found that concerning. So on a final note, and again, I, you know, not on the grand jury, I don't have the answers. But I would say that, and I've said this before, the students at Yolo deserve innovation, like we're trying to do at Washington Middle. The ideas that we're trying to do, getting people into career paths and college paths and those sorts of things. The students at Yolo deserve that. Not everybody is designed to go to a traditional typical high school. That's not the way it works. I did want to say that last year, I offered, and I'm going to offer again at the end of this year, I haven't heard anything. WSTA would be happy to discuss schedule waivers for Yolo if we need to do that. There's great models happening in the foothills for continuation high schools. And we've even toured some of them. But our students, they deserve this. We can do it. We can create something that's unique for them and let them experience success in a safe environment. I have a feeling a lot of our discipline issues and our safety issues would probably go away if people felt super motivated and excited to go to school. And I've interviewed some Yolo students, and that's not currently the case. So please consider Yolo. When we're talking about equity, they are who we're talking about. Have good evening.
Okay, thank you, President Knapp. And for our CSEA report, President Gondara has told me there is no report this evening. Okay. So then that takes us to public comments. And I have our disclaimer that I will read. As a reminder, at our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board, but not read out loud, although they are put into the meeting records. And we do not have any, we do not have any submitted this. Members of the public may address the board on topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children majoring a public board meeting may be a violation of the other student's right to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard, and is allowed under the open meeting laws that govern this meeting. Okay, and I have, it looks like we have at this time, one public comment this evening, and that is Mr. David Weller. Welcome.
Good evening. And I wanted to address something that I emailed to the entire board on May 28th at 3:41 PM in regards to the Bylaws 9323 meeting conduct. The board president may rule on appropriateness of a topic. If the topic would play suitability addressed by a later time, the president may indicate the time and place of when it should be presented. I have requested at two board meetings directly to you, Sarah, along with an email, and I've not gotten a response as far as to schedule a meeting for that. I am very disappointed, and I think this is part of your job duties, that you accepted as president and as my trustee. So, along with that, whenever a member of the public initiates specific complaints or charges against an employee, the president shall inform the complainant in order to protect the employee's rights to adequate notice before the hearing, such as complaints and charges. This is governed by Government Code 54957. So I do have a complaint against the sped department, Carles Alvo. This is your notice that I will be coming back at the next board meeting to deal with all the issues and complaints. You can put this into the closed session. I don't care one way or the other. It needs to be dealt with. I'm disappointed. If you're not going to do your job, then don't be here at all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weller. And I do not see any other public comments. So then that takes us to our public hearing. We have the public review of reasons for assigned/unassigned excessive reserves documented as required by the California Ed Code, and that is with Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Monique Soval.
Thank you. Good evening. This evening, I'm joined with our Director of Fiscal Services, Billy Duba, to have a public hearing result regarding the reserve disclosure. A public hearing is required whenever there is what's called excess reserves. Excess reserves are reserves in excess of the required 3% that's required by the state. Our reserves are about 8.65%, well, 5% higher than what's required by the state. Main part, or main reason for that is because per board policy, 6% of that is within our policy so that we can plan for economic concern. Remaining is our reserve balance for cash, or cash reserves, for any other items that we may need. Thank you.
Are there any comments? Okay, and I see no public comments on this item. Okay, so with that, we will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that now takes us to N1. This is the Washington Unified School District and Washington Middle College High School Local Indicators. And that is with our Director of Compliance and Accountability, Stephanie. I mean. My mic, are you?
Hey, good evening. Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, board members, Superintendent Hildreth, colleagues, and the community. Thank you for being here this evening. I am here tonight to share information in regard to the local indicators for both Washington Unified School District and Washington Middle College High School. The purpose of this presentation this evening is to define the California Dashboard Local Indicators, as well as to share the results, as this is a self-assessment. Sorry, that was the. In regard to our alignment to our strategic plan, and looking at our goals to student success, it really falls under a lot of different categories, but really wanted to highlight that this falls under our whole child, our safety, safe, and challenged and supported, as well as our equity principles, cultivating healthy relationships that create a safe and empowering environment for every student, staff, family, and community member, as well as with our fourth pillar, our third pillar, Pillar C, in regard to strengthening the effectiveness of all staff by creating a culture of data-driven, continuous learning and improvement. So when we look at our California Dashboard Local Indicators, the indicators are based on the eight state priorities included in the local education agencies, or LEAs, because I know we like our acronyms, Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP, which we will hear later. Unlike state measures that are automatically calculated by state captured data, the local indicators are calculated by data that we collect as an LEA. This slide, we've seen many times before. This looks at our eight state priorities. To meet the standard for each of the priorities listed as local, each local education agency must submit their self-analysis of the progress in the fall of each year for approval. Tonight, we are actually just presenting the self-analysis before you in a regular public session as an information item, as it is the night that the LCAP is approved. Hopefully. With our local indicators, they're based again on the eight state priorities. These are the local indicators, our Priority 1, Priority 2, Priority 3, Priority 6, and Priority 7. As with last year, our self-analysis process looked at a variety of things, including a self-reflective survey that was administered to administrators, district and site leadership, as well as site leadership teachers, department leads, and instructional leaders, as well as we looked at information from our LCAP process, information from meetings, as well as our district parent advisory committee meetings, and any other working meeting that we had. The next few slides are really going to look at the highlights of the self-analysis. The complete results are attached in the meeting agenda. So I'm going to look at each priority. Okay, Priority 1. This is a self-reflection tool, and it reports the progress on the assigned teachers, appropriately assigned teachers, student access to standards-aligned instructional materials, and our safe, clean, and functional school facilities. The way this is set up is the top part looks at Washington Unified School District, and then the next bullets look at Washington Middle College. So within our school district, as well as the middle college, we had zero students without access. So that means all students had access. That's just the way it's written. And then our facilities were all in good repair, based upon our FIT report, which is something that our maintenance and operation completes. For Priority 2, this one looks at our state-adopted academic standards, looking at our highlights. When we looked at it, and we looked at the survey data, all the areas of strengths were in our instructional materials that were aligned to our academic standards, professional development, and following our academic standards. Our areas of focus continue to be professional development, especially with our newly adopted curriculum, as well as a focus on standards. Very similar for Washington Middle College, with the exception of their focus being on the CTE work within that framework. For Priority 3, this is looking at our parent and family engagement with our areas of strength, looking at building relationships, building partnerships, and seeking input, where areas of strength are areas of focus. Looking at our increased parent volunteers, how do we help our parents come in and be volunteers within the schools, as well as continuing with our parent community forums and our community resource centers. With Washington Middle College, similar strengths. And then the area of focus is looking at getting involvement in a variety of parents with the advisory committee. So I'm working with Principal Lane, talking about how do we make sure that advisory committee is representative of the community. All right, Priority 6. This one looks at our Healthy Kids Survey. You're going to hear a little bit about that later in the next presentation, but it was administered in the spring this year. There will be a full report in the fall, just in regard to who it was administered to, looking at the grades, middle school, as well as high school, parents and staff. And then with Washington Middle College, it also was administered this spring, and by spring, I mean like May, June. Dr. Burns will talk about that in the later presentation. And then Washington Middle College had 63% of the students complete the survey. Okay, with Priority 7, this is looking at our extent in which all students have access to or enrolled in a broad course of study. This is a measurement on the LCAP. And then we do continue to have access, and our students are enrolled in the broad course of study. However, we do recognize that we do need to continue to look at who are those students based upon race, income, language, and ability who have access to those, and those are addressed in our. All right, so next steps. What happens with our local indicators? The data from this report is actually uploaded into the dashboard, which is the beautiful thing that we bring back to you. This year, it had the purple bars. Previously, it had a wide range of like a gauge. That information will actually be brought back and be published on our website in the fall for the next school year, for 2324. We will continue to monitor and review the current LCAP, as well as we get to write a three-year LCAP next year as well, using this information. So again, the intent of this evening was just to bring forth that report to you. The lengthy report is attached in the meeting.
Okay, questions? Thank you. And I do not see any public comments for this agenda item, so any board comments? Sure, Trustee Pazadi.
Just a quick one on Priority 2. I was looking at Washington Unified School District. It says all areas rated initial implementation or full implementation. Looks at Washington Middle College. It says most areas rated initial implementation, full implementation. What, why the most and not all?
Right, that is because of the CTE. That was in beginning, and that is specific because of the courses that they offer. They are currently not offering that CTE, those CTE courses. So that was beginning.
Middle College.
Yes.
Okay.
So that just had to do with that particular one. And any other? My only question. Okay, Clerk Coffee?
Sorry. My question is, since Washington Middle College is currently like adjoined to our CTC, you know, campus area over there, the cafe over at the Bright Cafe, is there, I guess, a way that we are going to be allowing it to kind of cross over a little bit there? Or are they trying to do something completely separate from what we currently have established within our school?
So that is a great question. I know Principal Lane could not be here this evening. I did share the previous questions with her as well. I can have her come back and present in regard to that. I do believe it has to do with the course offerings and the sequence to have students meet the AA requirements and to obtain that. So there are some limitations within the schedule. But I can have her, when she does her presentation, to share more.
I mean, they're just right across, right? The hall, not the street, not the town or the city. So, I mean, it would just make some sense if we could maybe somehow work that out. That might help out. That's all. Yeah.
And I, I think for follow-up on that, it could be a board memo or a piece versus having her come back to our July meeting, which might be busy, just having an update on that would be helpful. Does that sound okay? Okay, great. And then my only question would be, the self-reflection survey, is that consistent? Is that always the same tool? Does that ever change? And do you design that or have any thoughts on what that would look like next year? Do you want to use the same tool?
Yeah, the self-assessment survey is exactly the same. There are questions that are provided. So we use those, Director Ainsworth and I sent it out, both to Washington Unified School District staff, as well as Washington Middle College. So those questions are given to us. And they are ratings.
All right, well, thank you. I think we're all good. All right. Have a great evening. And that takes us now to information discussion, Item 2, Washington Unified School District Safety Update. And that is with our Director of Special Programs, Dr. Jay Burns. Welcome.
Thank you, trustees. Thank you for having me, Superintendent. Mario, I would be grateful if you clicked me through tonight, because you're much more amazing than I. And I just have to say this, welcome, everybody, and welcome, new principal. Oh, Ms. Dietrich, amazing. But thank you, guys, for having us. Tonight, we're going to do an update. Next slide, please. I love that first slide with all the mascots. You know, update to inform you what's going on with how we're doing this year on safety. We did this last year, and we've kind of touched back. A few months ago, we talked about the past data, the SEL screener. This time around, now we're going to look at our discipline data. Something to think about when we look at discipline data tonight, it's always a year behind, right? For the state of California. So when we look at it, you're going to see the data that comes from the California Dashboard and from Data Quest. And then we're also going to go over the California Healthy Kids data that we just gave. We just gave that survey. So we're going to review student support, staff support, our collaboration with West Sacramento PD, and even I've spent time with FIRE probation. The DA's been great this year. Jennifer McHugh's been amazing in supporting us. And then we'll present our next step. Next slide, please. So as usual, I'd like to align this to our strategic plan. Look at this. It's the whole child, healthy, safe, challenged, and supported, removing the predictability of success or failure, right? That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to keep these kids safe. We want them to be safe at school, feel loved. Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Pillar D, safe climate and equitable access for all. Want it to be safe. Next slide, please. And here's our suspension data. Like I said, we're a year behind in the data at the state always. So this is our data that you see on the left from last year, right? Intriguing number at the top. I don't know how we got on that number, but it's an intriguing number for data for me. Obviously, you can see the difference, and it's been going. Now, if you look at the one on the right, one thing, when you look at the California Dashboard, when you look at Data Quest, when they say violent incident, they say injury or no injury. And just to clarify for you, because I figured that would come up, violent could be anything causing physical injury, like a physical fight, mutual combat, as we call it. Two kids fighting, unfortunately throwing punches, and that's violent. That's injury court with violent force or violence. The difference with no injury, that could be bullying, that can be harassment, intimidation, threatening physical injury, right? Posturing. Posturing, okay? So I want you guys to see, and this is how it's laid, uh, listed under Data Quest. Weapons possession, illicit drug-related, right? That keyword, drug-related. Defiance only. Remember, we can't suspend for defiance and disruption in K through eight. We can suspend in nine through twelve, but not in K through eight. And then other reasons. Okay, next slide. So then we wanted to break it down by demographic. And this is always confusing to people when they look at it. Because you'll start seeing our foster youth at twenty-seven point nine percent. And to break, to explain this to you, you have to look at it this way. I'm going to try and say this slowly and then feel free to question. Unduplicated count of students suspended, right? That's the unduplicated, that's our students who are homeless, foster youth, right? And on any of those headings. Unduplicated count of students suspended divided by cumulative enrollment for that subgroup. Not the whole district. So we take the unduplicated count of foster youth and divide it, that's the number that was suspended, students who were suspended, and then divide it by the enrollment of foster youth. And that's where our twenty-seven point nine percent comes from. And that's a concern of ours. Right, we're taking that into consideration when we're looking at our restorative practices, when we're looking at changing behaviors. We're looking at kids who need more love and support. Kids who need to be referred to Victor Community Support Services. Kids who need, uh, groups on campus. So you start looking at this. Our African-American students. You can see our enrollment percentage on the right, what percent of our school district they are. And then on the left, you'll see they're suspended at least one day. And then on the right, over here on the far right, we wanted to break it down by male, female. And then they break it down in Data Quest by K through three, four through six, seven through eight, and nine through twelve. Next slide, please. The one thing I can tell you, this number hasn't been validated by the state, the zero, right? But I can tell you, because you know, I have to go before you guys. Anytime we have an expulsion, we've had zero expulsions this year. We had nine last year. Zero this year. Next slide. Then I kind of wanted to bring you guys into California Healthy Kids. Now, we're doing this every year now, instead of every other year. It's usually fifth, seventh, ninth, and eleventh. This year, we actually did it through more grades. But right now, the data I just received from the state recently was broken down by fifth, seventh, ninth, and eleventh. Okay? And you're going to see a differentiation here. You're going to see it broken down. Fifth grade has different questions, right? The elementary school kids have different questions than the secondary. Okay, next slide. So if you look at this slide, and we say schools perceived as unsafe or very unsafe. Those are the key words. Unsafe or very unsafe. The other responses, they had a choice on that one question, were neither safe, right? Or very safe or safe. So when we looked at this, and then you can read it to yourself, because I don't like reading to you. But you can see if they perceive the school as unsafe or very unsafe. Been in a physical fight one or more times is the key right here. One or more times. This is percentage of students. Been offered, sold, or given illegal drug one or more times. Next slide, please. Okay. Here's the key right here. We're breaking it down by demographics. Perceive school as safe or very safe. Keywording, safe or very safe. Okay? And then you can take a look. Okay, next slide. When we last met a few years back and we discussed bullying, we discussed, we wanted to break it down to subgroup. That was one of the requests from the school board. Can we break this down further? So we wanted to look at this and say, number of times harassed, at least one or more times in the last twelve months. And you can see the subheadings by gender, by religion, race, ethnicity, gay, lesbian, bisexual. You can see how it's broken down. Next slide, please.
Jake, can you hang one second?
Yeah, please.
Go back to the last slide.
Sure.
I don't want to stop. What does it mean, gender? I mean, is that the basis for their bullying?
Yes. Based on their gender, religion, yes. Next slide, please. Now here's fifth grade. If you tell a teacher you've been bullied, the teacher helps. And here's the key right here. Yes, some of the time. Yes, most of the time, or yes, all the time, and it was ninety-two percent. The next questions are a little different. Have you been teased about your body image? Forty-three percent. Have you been called bad names, targeted? Remember, this is fifth grade. The fifth grade. Mean rumors, lies spread about you. Been hit or pushed, right? Feel safe at school? Ninety percent. Next slide, please. And then here's the demographical broken down, okay? So here's the key at the bottom. Most or all of the time. Most or all of the time. Mixed ethnicities, seventy-six percent. White, seventy-one percent. Hispanic, sixty-five, and Asian, fifty-four percent. Next slide, please. These are some, uh, student supports that we've been working on and have been implementing. As you're aware, we've got restorative practices. Uh, Ms. Mari, uh, Marcela Romero's been doing amazing things. Restorative with the RPI, with the restorative practices. We're getting phone calls from administrators. These administrators will call us. Ms. Rodriguez will call and say, what else can I do? Do I have to suspend? Well, let's break it down. How can we change behavior? What is the teachable moment? Remember, we've had this talk before. In the state of California, there's only five reasons where you have to move for an expulsion or suspend. Only five reasons. And we've gone over that many times. Other than that, we can change behaviors. We can sit down and work with kids and figure out different ways to change behaviors. So where restorative practices come in. Mending Matters, these modules, these videos. They've used these at the high school. They've reduced their suspensions significantly at River City High School. And I can't wait to show the data next year, right? We're waiting on the data to come in. But the Mending Matters, these videos have reduced their suspensions and they've kept kids on campus, which then is increasing their academic, right? And their overall success. Greenlight Get Outside. It's a program that we've been running on campuses with mentoring, tutoring, um, outdoor education, team building, changing behaviors. Uh, they have a curriculum that we're working on. Self-awareness and Recovery is another group that we've been utilizing to come in with mentoring, uh, dealing with the kids from different aspects and working on different campuses. As you know, we've used the PAST survey twice throughout the year. You guys shared thoughts on it. We've been looking at other social emotional screeners. You guys asked us that. We've been looking at them. Uh, Ms. Rosario Arcona has done an amazing job finding us a screener for next year as social emotional screener that we're looking into. But this is twice a year. We look at it as a district. We look at it as a school. We look at it as a grade level. We look at individual students. And we utilize this as an early warning, right? The, if these kids need more love, like, uh, Dr. Salas always says. Then we have our Sanford Harmony, our social emotional learning, right? Our curriculum that we're utilizing, K through six. We have our social workers, our outreach specialists. I, you know, I get to work with these social workers and outreach specialists very closely, family liaisons as well. They are amazing. They are amazing. Um, I just always have to tell them, who takes care of you? Because you are giving so much to everybody else who takes care of you. Victor Community Support Services, the MH, the MHSSA grant. I think I got it right. The Mental Health Grant. We get a million dollars a year. We have this great grant going on with Victor. We're referring kids constantly to Victor. So we start out with our school social workers, right? We do six school social work, uh, meetings, meet with the kids. And then if they need to refer them from there, then they refer them next to Victor Community Support Services. And we do the, uh, work with them. And it's actually carrying on this summer. The amazing Rahale back here is using them in the extended learning program. Not to mention, we've offered it through the high schools. You know, that are still have summer school. And our other programs that are going on, Extended Year, the ESY, and our newcomers, right? Our institute, EL Institute. And then once again, the ELP program now. Amazing, amazing program. We called, oh man, it was amazing. Maria Munoz called every of our foster and our homeless kids and go, we're signing you up for summer. ELP program. Worked with Ryan, worked with Rahale and said, we're just signing you up. Let's go. Let's do it. That's my favorite saying, let's go. Next slide, please. I just wanted you guys to see and thank you guys for outreach specialists, right? We have eleven. Remember, and we have a twelfth one, because that's through the charter at Washington Middle College High School. There's a twelfth one there, but we have eleven through the district, one through the charter. We have eight social workers. Amazing social workers, and we're grateful. I, I can't tell you how thankful I am. Next slide. Staff supports. I want you to look at the trainings we've done this year. We went to an active shooter threat prevention and response. It was a regional training, it was a major one at Jesuit High School this year. There were police from all over, there were schools from all over. And, um, uh, Under Sheriff Barnes put it on with the FBI. It was amazing. It was eye-opening and was scary. And we had a lot of talks. All the APs came. We had an AP representative from every school. And we met and we sat at a table with City of West SAC PD, who's been amazing. Um, just so responsive to anything we ask for. Security training. We keep training our CSMs, Yola High School and River City High. Run hide fight training. We had West SAC PD come out. They trained our, our, when I say our administrators, they, we had at least one administrator from each school site. We watched the video. They trained us. Tough training. And now we're going to implement this. We created a training from this that I've run by, um, Chief Meeks is our new chief, right? Our deputy chief, not our chief chief, but our deputy chief. It's Chief Meeks. Run it by him, run it by Lieutenant Winger. Run it by FIRE. I met with FIRE, the FIRE marshal the other day. And we're going to do run hide fight training right before school starts in August. And all our staff's going to be trained too, as well. We did school vulnerability. We keep talking about hardening the site, right? Hardening the site. Are the trees need to be trimmed? Do we need bullards in front of a school? Do we need to lock the front door and, uh, to our school after kids get into school? And we'll talk a little more what the next steps are with that. But that's what the vulnerability training was like. Behavioral threat assessment training. That was free, again. These trainings, they've all been free. Uh, we had behavioral threat assessment training. Uh, we met with West SAC, but we had training where Sigma, this is, uh, Sigma came in with SAC PD. And SAC PD brought in this training to us. They've been going all around the region and we're talking about what it means to put together a behavioral threat assessment team. That's our next step, so I'll talk about in a minute. We've had district safety committee meetings, quarterly meetings. Our last quarterly meeting in May was each site was expected to review their referral data, their SWISS data, right? SWISS is PBIS. That's their data from their PBIS program. Their referrals, their suspensions, their safety, and discuss like, what does the data say? What does it say? Is your campus safe? What are you seeing? What are your next steps? What are your plans? Getting them to think. Catapult EMS. That's our, our program that we're utilizing to notify, communicate with teachers, then communicate with staff when we have emergencies on campus, uh, to, uh, take role, right? Take role. It's real time, it's live. Uh, and then we've had new purchases. Thank you to all you guys. We purchased a hundred radios. Hundred radios, we dispersed them across the district on top of the radios that schools are buying with their own site funds. We bought five hundred plus emergency buckets and backpacks for every campus, every classroom on campus. Next slide. Here's some things going on with West SAC PD. We have ongoing collaboration meetings. This is ongoing. These are just regular meetings. And we sit down, I get to meet with the lieutenants, uh, the deputy chief. Now, if we have an incident, we have another meeting. And then we debrief. We talk about it. What can we learn from the incident? We include the principal who was there in that school. And then we sit down and say, what can we learn? How can we move forward? How can we do better? What do we do well? What can we learn from this? And then we're also doing our monthly meetings. And now I've got FIRE on board. I, I was able to get the FIRE marshal, who's been extremely busy, on board. I meet with, uh, Kelly Kajenko. She's our juvenile diversion counselor. And we talked about now meeting monthly virtually with the principals and Kelly in doing that. Um, and then we meet with Taylor Nelson. And boy, I'm sorry, I'm leaving out our new person. He's got Taylor's job to do camps and clinics and anything we can do. Uh, remember, if you guys remember, they, they have football camp. We're talking about a volleyball camp. Um, what else are they having coming up? They have another camp coming up, but it's escaping me. Next slide, please. Here's moving forward. Here's our next steps. This is key. Behavioral threat assessment training. We had the training. Now we got to sit down. Jason Winger, Lieutenant Winger and I are sitting down and going, okay, what does this mean? How do we start this? We got to start our own district-wide behavioral threat assessment team. And then we got to figure out how to implement it on every camp. What does that look like to have a behavioral threat assessment on our campus? School vulnerability assessment. Next step is to meet with Lieutenant Winger. And they're called a SEP Ted-trained person. That's school vulnerability-trained persons from West SAC PD to walk our campus with MOT. So we're going to pick a campus and walk it and have a discussion and say, what does this campus look like? How vulnerable is this campus, right? Run hide fight training in August, right? We created a one-pager. We have the video. Now we've got to train, like, I'm going to go back over it with our administrators. And then our administrators are going to go train their staff as they get them ready for the upcoming school year, right? Additional training for campus security monitors. We want to keep them fresh. So we're bringing back our trainer to keep them fresh. Monthly meetings with principals and assistant principals reviewing safety protocols, policies and procedures. This is ongoing. That comprehensive school safety plan is real time. It's evolving. If we sit down with the chief and everybody and we have a talk and they say, we gotta do things differently. Then we're going to evolve and we're going to change. We're going to make changes. So procedures and practices, we're constantly reviewing the comprehensive school safety plan. One of the things that's come up is community schools. That's been a concern. What about safety about community schools? Well, I'm going to tell you, we worry about safety about community schools. We worry about safety with the after school program. We were worried about safety at football games, evening events, whatever. These are all things that we take into consideration. So I feel like yes, when you say community schools, yes, it's one more event going on our school campuses that we have to look into. And make sure that people are safe and taken care of. Continue implementation of catapult, electronic messaging, right? We're going to make sure that our people are trained on this and up to date on it. And then catapult's been great in sharing with us what's new and great out there to work with us. Just like, um, Mr. Neff said, we're reviewing the grand jury findings with our administrators. We're going to go over it. What are we going to learn from this? What can we do better? Right? Hindsight's 2020. So one of the things that came up in the grand jury report was investigations. So we're going to go back and make sure that all administrators are trained on investigations and how to do them properly. What does it look like? Continue the PBIS implementation, continue the restorative practice implementation. Continue the SEL, social emotional learning implementation. Um, we're right now, we've been sitting down today. We met a bunch of us. The amazing Carla back here and we reviewed and revised, we're working on revising our MTSS processes. That MTSS is looking at every child by name and need. What do they need? Developing an early warning system so we can catch these kids and figure out like, how can we love on them? How can we better support them? Is it academic? Is it behavioral? Is it social emotional? What do they need and how can we better wrap our arms around them? Review policies and procedures for upcoming sporting events. We've been working on that with River City High School and West SAC PD. And just events in general, just events in general. Last night, um, Dr. Hildreth and I got to go and meet with the chamber. And we talked about mental health, the need for mental health, and that's what they talked about. What is the need in, need in West SAC look like? And Chief Strange was talking about how red hot this area is, like if there was a heat map, how needy this area is for mental health services. We're doing a great job, but we just keep seeing escalating, escalating, escalating. We want to catch those mental health problems. Support these kids, these parents, these adults, the community members before it escalates to a violent act. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, um, Dr. Burns. We have one public comment right now, so we'll have that. And then, um, I'm sure we'll have some board questions and discussion. And I do only have one comment. Is that, okay. Uh, Mr. David Waller.
So I'm glad to hear that there's a lot of, um, movement going around the, um, safety. Um, I do have to let you know that my recent experience is a little bit different than this. Um, had a recent issue as far as harassment threats of violence, um, from a, um, student at, uh, River City. So when I called the school, it was because my child goes to a different school. We are a community. There are a bunch of Jesuit. There's a bunch of Christian brothers. There's other schools. It's still the community. What I got from the school was not our problem. Talk to the police. The police said, not our problem. This is a school issue. So I find it really interesting that you guys are now saying that you guys have monthly meetings and this is being worked out. But there is nothing in your policy and procedure of how to deal with, um, students from other districts that still live in the community. So it shouldn't be a hand washing thing. You talk about evolving your policy and procedure. It needs to be including students from other districts. Along with the restorative practices, along with the students, having the parents do that too. They need to be accountable and work things out also. It's a hidden population with the students that don't go to the district schools here, but still live in the community. The students and the parents. Again, this is something that has not been addressed. It's not in your policy and procedure and the idea of not our problem. Call the police. The police say not our problem. Call the school. It leads to court injunctions and restraining orders. You guys know that. We'll see you as witnesses. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, board comments or questions? Pressy Paza.
Sure. Um, let me start with, um, quick question about the grand jury report. Was that based off of last year's data? Because it mentioned two knife incidents. I don't recall us having expulsion this year, so. Um, it would have had to have been the previous.
You're correct. And for incidents transpired a year previously.
So in terms of, um, the active shooter training, that you guys went to. How, in what way are, is WSD, um, and, and West SAC PD collaborating? Like, I don't want to know the great details, but like, how frequently are you meeting and, you know, developing strategies and plans? For just that specific, because that's a high, that's separate and apart from regular safety items, right?
It's a great question. So we, they sent two officers out. Everybody came out, right? The chief, the deputy chief came out. But they had their officer Schmidt and the other name, uh, is escaping right, right now. Their specialist in active shooter training came out and trained us. Trained our administrators, walked us through it hand by hand and answered the questions of our administrators. And then we've had incidents that have transpired on campuses where we had to go into lockdown. And then we, Monday morning quarterback, right after that incident and say, okay, how do we handle this? What does it look like? So we have discussions about everything from drones being used and going up in the air. Two, is a helicopter going to come out? At what point does Yolo County Sheriff respond or do they start calling over Dale Grove PD? So we have ongoing conversations that get pretty in, in depth. Because we want to make sure that we have every, you know, rock, you know, unturned.
You mean former SRO Schmidt?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
So, okay. Do you have weekly briefings with West SAC PD? Because when you're talking about ongoing meetings, that might be different than something popping off in the community that may start at, say, an apartment complex. Where some of our kids go to school that may spill into one of our high schools, right? Are, are we getting like briefings and updates and, and like, is there somebody from, from the police department letting us know, hey, there's something going on over here that you guys might want to keep an eye on? Is, is like something regular or weekly?
Oh, weekly, nightly, I get phone calls at 10 o'clock at night, one o'clock in the morning. Um, Deputy Crouch was amazing about it. Deputy Crouch is now retired, did an amazing job. We now have Chief Meeks, uh, Lieutenant Winger's been great about calling me. Now we have Lieutenant Lombardo who will call me. The officers have my phone number and will call me during the week to say, hey, this just went down or we're dealing with this. Can we get your support? Yeah, they, we don't wait for important, like important things. We don't wait till our next meeting, if that's what you're asking.
So, and then the, the other follow up to that is, is it reciprocal? So when something happens
Yes.
at our, at our school sites, do we feed that information to West SAC PD? Like say there was a fight on campus that doesn't materialize into anything, but you might want to be aware. There might be something greater transpiring at home and most likely West SAC PD will probably already have an idea or understanding. But at least letting them know that something happened at the school that may, maybe a little, um, a little volatile out in the community.
Yeah, they're saying, don't give Jay Burns your cell phone number.
Right.
All these people will laugh at that who work with me because I'm going to text you. I'm going to call you. Um, our new assistant supervisor said, be careful because I'm going to text you and call you a lot. We're constantly communicating. Uh, Lieutenant Winger and I are talking Monday about an incident that transpired. That, uh, our trustee is aware of.
Good.
And so it's constant.
And then I only had one, one more question. Um, and, and it's because an event transpired, um, last year during one of the football games. And, um, I, I was talking to two of the contracted police officers there. And, and, and one of the questions that I asked him was, you know, what is expected of? And their answer to me is, we're not sure. And that was something that I, you know, as a school board member, I was a little startled by. So I, I want to at least, let's, let's hear how that kind of materializes and, and, and how do we rectify it? And how do we, or what have we done to rectify?
Yeah, um, I'm smiling a little bit and having more law enforcement. The conversation didn't go very well with the deputy chief when the deputy, when they heard that. And then we went and we debriefed. Uh, it was a great meeting. And everybody walked away knowing what the expectations were. Everybody walked away.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir Coffee? I have one question. On your slide, you talked about next steps. Um, and one of the next steps was review, review and revise the MTSS process. And one of the things you said is you were looking at every child and their need. I'm curious to know how is it that you are going to reach or look at every child and their needs. I want, I want us to be realistic, you know, realistic in our expectations. And we do have a lot of kids within our school district and, um, how do you know that the one who seems bubbly and smiling has nothing going on versus the one who is projecting emo vibes?
It's a great question. Seventy four hundred kids, right? Seventy four fifty, seventy four forty four. The numbers keep changing for enrollment for next year when we're looking at them. And, uh, and it's interesting. So before this meeting, I'm sitting in my office. And this time of year, I actually get to sit and work on some things. And we're looking at point systems, believe it or not. There's a thing called a point system to create an early warning system. Sounds odd. And you start triangulating. You look at everything from the social emotional screener to chronic absenteeism, to tardies, to, uh, test scores, to other things, referrals. Uh, we start and, and this is what it's getting down to, creating this dashboard. So you can start looking and creating points for lack of better terms to say, is this child at risk? We're looking at these children from like fifteen different angles to determine what their need is. And, and trying to, and look, yes, we have a lot of kids, but I don't like numbers and I'll tell you why. Because you could say ninety nine percent of the people are happy. And I'm like, well, I want to know who the one is. Because that one might be my child, my grandchild, my nephew, niece, whatever. So I, I just can't, we can't, yeah, we're going to go after all of them.
Yeah. Though, one of the reasons why, and I mean, I don't really like point systems because I'll tell you right now, I will exceed your point system and you wouldn't see me and, but had you known what was going on, then you would be like, oh, how did we miss it? Because there's a lot of children who know how to put on that mask and who knew how to survive because that's survival mode. And so for me, it's really important that we focus on those kids just because they're smiling. Just because they look like everything is okay. They got the As, they got the Bs, they're in drama. They're in band. They're in everything and things are going on because they put on that front because they don't want anybody to know. And I'm speaking from experience.
So I'm liking what you said. So I really want you to think about this. You said drama, band, whatever. So I think Ms. Weatherly.
They can be, oh, they're in everything.
Right.
And we are okay. We look okay. But I'm just saying there's not that support system because they don't want anybody to know. So I, I'm hearing you say, we're looking at every child and we're looking at those high, at risk children. There are some children who are at risk and who are over functioning. And that's all I'm trying to say is we need to make sure that we're not just looking at the facade of they look like everything's okay and they're not.
Can I, can I add just to that powerful point? Is one of the things, um, that I think is a benefit in our district of thinking about meeting all of the needs is what you're describing is the importance of relationships with an adult who our students can trust. And a group of us went to, uh, a wonderful conference last week, but one of the things that stood out in our debrief, it was the point that students who are known well are taught well. And so this need and, you know, I have many student advisories. Um, the students talk about the relationships they have with their teachers. They have with their counselors. They have with the campus security. It's not about titles. It's about who provides that opportunity for them to talk to an adult who knows and understands them. And I think, uh, if we continue to focus on the need for positive, healthy relationships with every single adult on campus, regardless of what your title is, then that's an additional way and along with the dashboards and all the triangulation that we're going to be doing is that's how we're going to know we're going to hit every student.
Thank you. I just want you to think back at Yolo Grad Night and a shout outs to Ms. Ellie. Thank you guys.
Oh, I'm not done. I have some too. I'm going to, yeah. Um, are you good? Okay. Um, thank you so much, Dr. Burns, for all of these pieces. And, and I think it's powerful to talk about all the staff and what they do. And I'm thinking of my daughter, um, how she said to me, said, how's school going? What happened? She's like, oh, well, Colleen and I now hang out with the yard duty because she's really cool. We have a new yard duty and she, we both really like her. So I just thought that was the cutest thing, you know, is you never know what connection that is at school and the people that make a difference in our kids' lives. It's, it's every single person in this room and it's every single person in our school district. And, um, and it's just very heartwarming to hear those stories when our kids come home and say that. Um, so I'm going to delve back a little bit into this, um, data. And I know that, um, well, this is the data from 2023 and there's not a particular slide, but as we talk about feeling safe at school, um, it's a couple, it's secondary numbers are certainly lower. And I know that sometimes there's things outside of our world even that impact that, you know, Uvalde happened this year. And there's other pieces that make people feel unsafe as well, that we can't always, um, control unfortunately. Um, but it is concerning to see some of these lower numbers. And then even, um, in another one, I think with fifth grade, I noticed in both Asian, um, children, um, showed up, uh, some of the lowest numbers, um, in a couple of these places. And I'm, I'm wondering if maybe, um, you can speak to that or if you noticed that as well, um, in, in this data.
So we just got this data and one of the things that I'm, uh, we're trying to look at is we want to dig it down deeper, right? We want to do a deeper dive. This was a quick dive into it. Really want to look in and look at subgroups and see what's going on. This is why the data is so important because I'd noticed that same thing that you noticed as well, like first perusal. I was like, wow. And then I started comparing the data to last year and looking at it and nerding out on it for lack of better terms and saying, okay, where are we at? Are we doing better or not? And that's why we wanted to do the California Healthy Kids Survey every year for a while, especially after the pandemic, to get a better baseline and see what our needs are.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I liked too, that you have some of the other surveys that you've been working on and the SUN advisory. I think those are good pieces so that we can, um, because of course all of the numbers are lower than, um, to what we want for kids feeling safe at school. And then to look at the student supports, this is such an exhaustive list. There's so many things happening. You have such an important, um, department, um, under you and belt, and I appreciate all of these pieces here. And since Rahale is here, I'll also speak to, um, the pieces right now of the enrichment this summer and talk about, as you did, building kids up with SEL and what kids are getting out of that. Uh, not just that they have a, a small academic piece in there too, which is great, but all of the confidence building, the doing theater, they're doing sports. They're all stepping out of their comfort zones. And I'm just hearing such special things about that. And it all, to your point overlaps. And I think making a priority of our foster youth and ensuring that they were signed up for these really just a gift. So thank you for that, um, because it's, it's really special. And as, as are all of these pieces, the green light, um, get outside and all of these are, are just really phenomenal. So I want to thank you, um, for all of that. And then going into, um, the pieces in terms of staff supports, I'm glad that there will be look at, um, school vulnerability. We've talked a little bit about that here of, you know, what is the consistency across the district? Because when you go up to one of our front doors at schools, it sometimes feels different. You know, which schools, some schools keep a lock and have a bell and some don't, but say they wish they did. And so I, I assume that that's part of this conversation. And my ask might be that maybe we do a, um, closed session piece just on hearing some of those pieces of the safety. Uh, maybe we'll have to ask legal counsel about safety because I know there's some safety plans that we, um, that are purposely not done in a recorded meeting. Um, because we want to make sure our kids are as safe as possible. So having a conversation on that and the findings and what that will look like moving forward, I think would be really important. Um, and then, um, as well as, um, my piece with the, the run height fight, um, fight training that you spoke of with Chief Meeks and working with others. And they, I agree Lieutenant Winger, they are, we have some really good partners who care about so much about this district and our kids. Their kids have been in this district too, and I really appreciate them. Um, will that training be with staff? Substitutes? And then what will the kids look like in that in terms of training? Can you just share maybe the thought on what that will look like?
And that's, no, it's a great question. Just so you know, Lieutenant Winger is one of the foremost in the field. He's doing training in Santa Cruz and he's training in active shooter. Um, the next training is what we're going to do is like I said, we're training the administrators. Administrators are then going to train their staff. And then we're going to walk the kids through a drill. We're going to walk them through a drill. And that's where I'm still having those questions, right? We have a few weeks till, where I'm still having the questions with, uh, Chief Meeks. Uh, Lieutenant Lombardo, I'm leaving out the other, the new, other new lieutenant to say, what should that look like with our kids? But the greatness in this is that I can ask them those questions and say, I'm a little concerned. One other thing I don't want to leave out, you asked about consultants. I've met with three separate consultants so far today, just to give you a heads up.
I think that's a, and I appreciate you being in that room and asking those questions because I know you're looking at it with the, you know, SEL lens as well. Because what are the repercussions of that? And I know best practices in the past, people thought, oh, train our kids through drills. And then there's some really negative pieces of really train your staff. So they've just got it. And train the kids, hey, listen to directions, but not, I just want to make sure we're not walking our kids through something that is traumatic and not beneficial. And it's research.
All you have to do is Google it. And there's actually SEL training for active shooter training now. Because of what you're saying, people are using the word triggered. I was triggered by this drill. My child came home. So we're trying to figure out, how do we do this and what does it look like?
And then, um, the only last piece for me is that we focus really too on making sure that maybe that day with the substitutes is that they have a day where the, uh, our visiting teachers are trained. So that if our kids are with substitutes, let's say, we know that they have the same knowledge as everyone else. And then, okay, my last, last one, um, is do you have the support you need to make all this happen? Do you have the tools you need or?
Yes. I mean, we're moving forward. I've been, when I meet with Dr. Hildreth. Now, when I'm meeting with, uh, Ms. Street, they're saying, what do you need? What do you need? Assistant Superintendent, uh, I'm stuttering. You made me nervous. No. Mr. Purner, the other good looking bald head over there. Um, when we meet, he says, what kind of, right? There's another handsome one. When he asked me, you know, what's your budget look like? So now everybody's saying, what do we need for a safety budget? So now, so now we're trying to prepare. I get to sit down with Director Duba. And it's kind of fun to say Director Duba, but I get to sit down with Billy and discuss like budgets. How do we fund? So every time I ask for something, I need this much money for radios. Where do we find it? They help me find it. We need money for backpacks. You know, emergency backpacks for the buckets. They help me find it. And now we're just looking and now we're looking, what, what does this consultant look like? What else do we need to do? What does a budget look like along the lines of safety? Those questions come up a lot, but man, these guys are so responsive. I'm grateful. And Monique is another one. He's been amazing.
Thank you for that. I think nothing's more important to us than our kids' emotional safety and their physical safety too. So, thank you.
I do have to share this one thought. Yes, for me, my life was changed and you've talked about it by our coach. You talk about relationships and I still talk to that person to this day. And I tried to hide everything. So thanks, guys.
And I should say, as you walk away, Dr. Burns, that I also hear from principals and so many people on our school sites who, when they say, do you feel supported? Because I asked them that same question and they say that they do by you. And so thank you for that and ensuring that, uh, we have support systems in place. Okay. And so that now takes us to information discussion item number three, and that is the City of West Sacramento letter regarding the sale lease of surplus property of the former Club Pheasant. And that's Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Monique Stovall. And I know we also have our city representative.
Thank you so much for this time together. This evening, we're bringing forth to you a letter that was provided to us by our city of West Sacramento. We also discussed this in our facilities subcommittee on June 5th. What this letter is about is the city purchased the Club Pheasant, um, which is a historical landmark here in West Sacramento, and they intend to sell it. And the question is, is one, why are they, why are they coming to us? And that's because government code requires the city to contact certain entities and give those entities 60 days to notify the city if they are interested in purchasing a particular property. With the subcommittee, we had a healthy discussion and they asked us to bring this to you for discussion and direction. A couple of things about the property, it's important to note the city intends for whomever purchases it, that they keep that property as a restaurant. In addition, with the other land around the property, ensuring that that other parts of land is for affordable housing. The committee discussed it, um, they felt like, and you know, committee, please, um, stop me if you'd like to share, uh, first. But they felt like in summary that we are not in the restaurant business. And I'll say from my end, we're in the business of educating students and people. And they did not feel like at that point that this was in the best interest of this, the district. However, they definitely wanted us to bring this to you as a board as a whole to provide, um, an opportunity for discussion and receive direct.
Really?
I knew what the direction was. It was just wanted to be safe. I mean, we could bring all our kids that graduate the bright campus and, and the garden cafe and let them open up a little restaurant if you want. If you wanted that opportunity to say, yeah, go ahead. No. No, we, we all agreed that there was no need to, uh, there was no need to say yes to it, but we wanted to have your input as well.
I appreciate my being here as well, um, from the city.
Didn't need to come, but you're good.
I think, um, yes, we do not have interest in doing this, um, as you probably imagined. I think that's, uh, makes sense. But I do think there are conversations down the road and that this conversation here maybe opens up ideas in the future to be talking about. If there are places that the city has land, uh, maybe it would start to be appropriate to do some land swaps, the places that are already, um, spaces that the city's using, like maybe some of the parks are. So I do think that there might be room down the road for a conversation about, um, our properties and best utilizing them together. But I don't think that the Pheasant Club is, um, or whatever it will be next, um, that we will happily go and enjoy and eat at is, should be a school district. All right. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Tracy.
Okay. And that takes us to our consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Oh, and I, I, we had no public comments, I should say, on the, on the plan. Um, are there any, um, comments? There's no public comments, but on our consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay, so moved by Trustee Pazadi.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Vanegas, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. All right, Dr. Hildreth, take it away.
Thank you. Now that we have, um, official approval, I would like to, uh, introduce two, uh, new employees, uh, to the district. So I will start with Patricia Trish Dietrich. Please stand, um, and want to say welcome. And congratulations, we are so thrilled to have Trish as the new principal at, uh, Bridgeway Island. Trish comes with a wealth of experience and knowledge about our district. Talk about somebody who is well-respected, has great relationships. And that has come out in so many ways and all of the, um, jobs that you have had in the district. So most recently, Trish has been the AP at Bridgeway Island. She's worked with teachers, she's led data chats, she's supported students and staff with positive behavior and intervention strategies. She's focused on instruction, um, building, uh, collaborative, positive relationships with staff, with parents and caregivers, with students, helping to reinvigorate avid. She's been an instructional coach, a teacher leader, a teacher and a trainer of teachers in our district and out without our district. And as I've gotten the opportunity to really engage with Trish, uh, recently, I definitely see all the aspects of what makes West Sac schools so successful in the qualities that you have. So thank you so much for your commitment to, uh, West Sac and the students and families that we serve and congratulations. All right. And next we have, uh, another new, uh, face, and I'm going to ask Assistant, uh, Superintendent of Business Services to come and introduce our new Director of Facilities.
I'd like to introduce to you our new Director of Facilities, Dan Vanowitz. Dan comes to us, uh, most recently from Vacville Unified School District, has over 17 years. He'll be bringing our district. He has plenty of experience with bond measures. He has history in maintenance options and transportation. And so that's a great complement to our current MOT team. And we are so happy that he'll be joining us.
Board, um, President Kirby Gonzalez and Dr. Hildreth, I just, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity and thank you to Ms. Stovall for this opportunity. I have been doing this for a long time. We've, doing the research on this district. It, it's, it's very exciting because I see that a lot of the things that, that need to be done here are things that I've done, um, in the past, especially in the last eight years, um, with the bond measure in Vacville. So, um, I'm really excited to get started and, um, and to get out here and get some work done. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Welcome. We have a lot of facility needs, so we're happy you're here.
We're getting right to work.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you for choosing the district.
And, and I didn't ask Trish if she wanted to make a comment, so you, you took the time to come here, so have your moment in the.
For everyone watching, you're too far away.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez and Dr. Hildreth and trustees. Mostly, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. And honestly, it's really special to hear you say all those kind words about me, but I could say the same about pretty much every person in this room who I've taught with, who have been mentors to me. And I just really want to say thank you to you all because we all know what a special place this is to work and to raise our kids. And thank you guys so much for trusting me with your kiddos and trusting me with this opportunity. Go Bees!
All right. Thank you.
President Kirby Gonzalez, let me just say something. I, I want to say the selection wa- was a great one for Ms. Dietrich. But I, the sheer number of contacts that I've been receiving from parents, um, from teachers, from classified staff saying that Ms. Dietrich is just such a wonderful, uh, candidate was kind of overwhelming. And so I, I just wanted to share that with you so you know that the community is really behind you.
It's true. We had to tell the community, we're not actually involved in hiring. That would be really inappropriate if the board was doing that. So, um, thank you, but you should put that in the survey, but it, it's true. Many people did. And but on your own merits, you're here. So thank you. Okay, um, that now takes us to action item one of 12. So approval of the Washington Unified School District's 2023-2024 Local Control Accountability Plan, that's the LCAP. And that is our Director of Complaints and Accountability. Welcome back up, Stephanie Groot.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, board members, Dr. Hildreth, colleagues and the community. Who is smaller now. This evening, we are requesting the adoption of the 2324 Washington Unified School District LCAP. The LCAP is intended to be a comprehensive planning tool to support student outcomes and its important component of our LCFF, um, which is our local control funding formula. Uh, the components are attached, um, and assembled in the correct order. Uh, we held our required public hearing on June 8th. At that meeting, there was a request to have the draft LCAP shared with our Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. That has occurred as was confirmed by our Director of Special Services. Um, and we look forward to having a member of that advisory committee on our LCAP engagement team next year. Since that time, um, only clerical and wording clarifications were made to the LCAP as was shared with our county office. So they asked for some further clarification. Those were made, no changes to actions or metrics and no additional feedback was received.
Okay, thank you so much. And I do not see any public comments. So are there any board comments?
I move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Pazadi, seconded by Trustee Vanegas, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. So stay on up for the approval of the Washington Middle College High Schools, um, 2023-24 Local Control Accountability Plan.
Yes, so I am here, welcome again. Good evening. This evening, we are requesting the adoption of the 2324 Washington Middle College High School LCAP. Um, again, this is intended as a comprehensive planning tool. The components are attached and are assembled in the correct order. The public hearing was held also on June 8th. The feedback was shared with Principal Lane, um, in regard to some of the questions that had happened at that time. Only clerical and wording changes were made. There were a few corrections that needed to happen, um, but as far as the actions and metrics, no changes were made and no additional feedback was received.
Okay, thank you. And I have no public comments. Are there any board comments? Okay, moved by, um, Trustee Vanegas. Seconded by Clerk Coffee, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. So now.
I'm still here.
You're still here. That takes us to the approval of the Local Control Accountability Plan for the Federal Addendum for the Washington Unified School District.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, this, this item is the federal addendum and it is meant to supplement the LCAP and to ensure that all local education agencies have the opportunity to meet the provisions of ESSA. Um, the LCAP Federal Addendum template must be completed and submitted to the California Department of Education to apply for our ESSA, our federal funding. This was originally brought in, uh, 2019 as required, and then we review this every year. Um, and that the funding is considered in our plans with our LCAP. The attached narrative document describes how federal funds are being utilized to support the LCAP goals in addition to state and local funds. Um, the federal funding is reported through the consolidated application, which I will bring forth in next month, July.
And I have no public comments. Questions? Or motion?
I move. I second.
All right, moved by Clerk Coffee, seconded by Trustee Vanegas, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Okay, approval for the Single Plan for Student Achievas or Achievement, or what we call the SIPSAs. Um, they are for Bridgeway Island, Elkhorn, our Evergreen Opportunity, Riverbank, Southport, Stonegate, Washington Unified Virtual Academy, Westfield, Westmore Oaks, River City High School and Yolo High School.
This is required in regard to the schools receiving the funding. This is funding that is allocated through our, um, supplemental concentration funds is outlined in our LCAP. So this evening, we are requesting the approval. These have been reviewed, um, by Ed Services as well as our Fiscal Department to make sure that they are in alignment and meet the required components.
Okay, I have no public comments, any questions? Or a motion?
I move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Pazadi, seconded by Trustee Vanegas, all in favor.
Aye.
I too. Okay, that now takes us to ten. So you are.
Thank you.
Um, so we, as a reminder, we moved up, um, item 10, which is approval of the Disclosure of Collective Bargaining Agreement titled, uh, Regarding Additional Duties with the California School Employees Association. And that is with Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Monique Stovall.
Thank you and give good evening. This evening, we are requesting your approval of the Disclosure of Collective Bargaining Agreement for the MOU that will be coming forth to you after me regarding additional duties for our classified, um, California School Employee Association, uh, employees. The cost of this MOU is $20,581. Through the disclosure, we are required to certify with the county whether or not we can afford it. And we do believe that we can afford this MOU.
Okay, and I have no public comments? Any board comments? Motion? Okay, motion by Clerk Coffee, seconded by Trustee Pazadi, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. All right. Thank you. Thank you. So that now, now takes us back up in order to five. Approval of the Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Additional Duties with California School Employees Association and its Review Chapter Number 168 and one confidential employee, and that is our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Mr. Kamal G. Panil.
Uh, trustees, good evening. We're asking the board to approve a memo of understanding or a memo of understanding that was drafted with CSEA in collaboration to recognize employees that were performing duties that are outside of their job description, uh, during the 2223 school year. Uh, we've, uh, brought this forward as a, uh, collaboration to recognize and honor the work that they have performed, uh, with these duties.
Thank you. I have no public comments. Any board comments? Okay, motion? Okay, moved by Clerk Coffee.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Pazadi, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you for that. And now we have the approval of the revised effective date and seniority date for the 2022-2023 Reclassifications of the California School Employee Association and its Review Chapter Number 168. Again, our Assistant Superintendent.
Trustees, thank you. Um, what we're asking is the board had previously taken action to approve the reclassification of employees to make that, uh, their effective date, um, July 1st, uh, of the next fiscal year. Uh, due to these employees performing the duties during the school year, um, we're bringing a revision back to the, uh, trustees to make their effective date and their seniority date in the positions that they were approved for reclassification. Um, to make that effective date, the, uh, the evening of, uh, April 27th, when the board took action to approve their job description.
Okay, there's no public comment. Are there any board comments? I move. I move by Clerk Coffee.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Vanegas, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. And now that takes us to, I'm correct, we're on seven, right? Yes. Okay, approval of the revised effective date and seniority date for the 2022-2023 Reclassification of the Human Resource Analysis, the Senior Human Resources Analysis, again, our Assistant Superintendent.
Trustees, similar to, uh, the action that we had, uh, taken with our CSEA members, we had a, uh, confidential employee, which is not, uh, which, uh, is not represented by a bargaining unit. That was also gone through, uh, had gone through the reclassification process. Similarly to the CSEA positions, they were approved, um, on the same date of April 27th, um, with an effective date of July 1st. We're asking trustees. we had a confidential employee, which is not represented by a bargaining unit. That was also gone through, had gone through the reclassification process. Similarly to the CSEA positions, they were approved on the same date of April 27 with an effective date of July 1. We're asking trustees to approve the revision of the effective date and seniority date to April 27 when the job description was approved.
Okay, no public comments?
I move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Pasati.
Second.
Seconded by Clerk Coffee, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to item 8, Approval of Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan. Rahalay Alabaki, our Director of Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. So this evening, I'm here to request approval of our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan. The plan was presented on May 24 to the board, and once it's approved, we will be posting it to our website for the CDE request.
Yeah, there are no public comments? Any board comments?
Move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Venegas.
I like your brevity.
Seconded by Clerk Coffee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye.
I figured you guys already heard all about it last night.
They're so good, it's such a good thing, though. Okay, now we're at the Approval of the 2023-2024 Washington Unified School District Budget. Our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Monique Stolp.
Thank you, this evening, we are requesting your approval of our 2223, excuse me, 2324 budget. We held a public hea- hearing on June 8, and this evening, we are requesting your approval of budget.
Okay, there's no public comments? Any board comments? Questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Pasati.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Venegas, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Okay, and now we're going to 11, because we did 10, and that's the Adoption of Resolution Number 2223-66, the Apple Master Sales Agreement, Assistant Superintendent Business Service-
Thank you. We are bringing forth to you for approval this resolution to enter into what's called a master agreement. It's in essence, an agreement to quote, piggyback or use a contract from another district. At our last board meeting, there were resolutions for cooperative purchasing agreements. This is similar, because it's a contract that has already been competitively bid and is available for other districts to use. This one is specifically for the district's purchase of Apple products to be able to support our students and staff.
Perfect, there's no public comment on this, and I do not believe that we need to read this.
No, you do not.
Okay, but it is a resolution, so we'll do a roll call. Is there a motion?
I move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Pasati. Seconded by Clerk Coffee, Trustee Pasati.
Aye.
Clerk Coffee. Trustee Venegas.
Aye.
And aye to vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and now that takes us to the Approval of the Out-of-State Conference for the Unbound Ed Standards Institute, which will be July 17 to 21, 2023, hosted in Washington DC. Our Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, Audrey Street.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, and trustees, and Dr. Hildreth. As you, first, let me start by saying it's been a wonderful first two weeks for me. I had the opportunity to spend some time in a professional learning experience last week with lots of people from Ed Services, principals, teacher leaders from the district. And we're before you tonight, asking if we can take an additional group of educators to the Standards Institute in Washington DC in July. It's an immersive, five-day learning opportunity for, again, principals, department leads, grade-level leads, participants participate in conversations about race, implicit bias, how that impacts instruction. They leave the conference equipped with resources, tools, knowledge, connections, relationships, to go back to their school sites and have courageous conversations, make important shifts and tweaks to their instructional practice, bring their colleagues along with them in the process. And so we're hoping to take a team from the high school, additional district office personnel, as well as teachers and principals in July.
Right, okay, there's no public comment, are there any board comments? Yeah.
So you say that you want to have, I want to make sure I understand, we're going to have somebody from each school site going to this conference?
That was-
Or that's the goal?
That's the goal. We noticed that certain department chair leads and certain grade-level leads and certain schools were not represented in our first round or first cohort. And so Superintendent Hildreth wanted us to come to you and ask for the opportunity to fill in some of those gaps by taking an additional team, based on their availability, of course, to the July Institute. So yes, it is our goal to make sure all departments, grade levels, and schools are represented either by a teacher leader, the principal, an assistant principal, so that's definitely the goal.
Would it be possible to obtain, once you have a list, get that list and what school site or where they are representing, where they are represented? So that way, we have an understanding of where and who is being, you know, who's going?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think, too, this is a big investment for these pieces, and it is probably a one-time investment, because this is a big piece. And so I'll be excited to hear how, what is the plan to carry the momentum and keep this work moving forward as we go on? Okay. Nothing else?
I move.
Okay, so moved by Trustee Pasati. Seconded by Clerk Coffee, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, look at that. And now that takes us to our Board Governance, our Approval of the Revision of the Regularly Scheduled Board Meeting Calendar for 2023-2024, and that is Dr. Hildreth, our Superintendent.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez. We're bringing forth this item because we noticed that we needed to make a change for our board meeting calendar for 2324. The board approved the first draft of our meeting calendar at our board meeting on the 24th. However, on that, at that time, we noticed after the approval that we had put the first and third Thursdays on the calendars for the months of September and June. So we noticed that, and now we have revised it so that the calendar will show the September 2023 dates for the board meeting should be September 14 and September 28. And then the dates for the meeting in June of 2024 should be listed now as June 13 and June 27. So wanted to make sure that we have that change on record, since this is the last meeting of our 2223 school year. We wanted to start our 2324 year with all the corrected-
This is it, we can't change it anymore after this, right?
Can't change it until July 27.
Right.
Well, as you know, we can always change a board meeting, but we would prefer not to do that, as we had to do this year. And I think, moving forward, not for now, obviously, but because scheduling has been such a challenge with the board, I think in the future, as we think about planning for future goals, is maybe plugging in that can always be removed. But a couple special board meetings, when we know we are going to probably have those, like the budget meeting. There's a couple times where we know we're going to have a special board meeting at this time of year. It can still be moved, but I think just on practice, it's a little easier for our planning than when we have a lot pop up with us. So food for thought. There's no public comment on this? Any board comment or discussion other than that? I'll move it forward, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Trustee Venegas, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Approval for Trustee Venegas and Clerk Coffee to attend the 2023 California Latino School Boards Association Unity, Annual Unity Conference, Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you. One of the things that has been such a benefit for our governance team is our willingness for professional learning together and going outside for opportunities, as we saw with Coast to Coast, and being able to advocate for the needs of our students. So we have another opportunity to have a trustee representation to attend the 2023 California Latino School Boards Association Unity Conference. It's being held September 28, 2023 through October 1. And this is a conference statewide that allows school board leaders and administrators and policymakers to come together and think about ideas and problem solve together, especially to focus on our Latinx students. And it would be great if we could have some board representation at this conference. And we know that our Board Bylaw 9240 states that all board members may attend conferences for the purpose of board development, and it is, the request to attend will come before the board for approval. So asking that the board approves for Trustee Venegas and Clerk Coffee to be our representatives at the CLSBA.
And for just transparency of the process, is when we have our bylaws, as you spoke to, do say that CSBA or Master of Governance that the board can attend, and any additional come before the public just for transparency and to make sure if there were ever times where we were in places where we weren't sending staff to trainings, that then we would look at ourselves. But I appreciate both of you. There's no public comment?
Do we need a motion on this?
Yep, we do.
Okay, I will move it.
Perfect. Yeah, you can.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, you should want to go. All right, so moved by Trustee Pasati. Seconded by Trustee Venegas, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. For going, look forward to hearing about that. And now we have our Approval of the Board Governance Calendar for the 2023-2024.
Thank you. Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez. We know that our CSBA partners give us a template to think about what are the topics that we want to make sure we highlight during a school year. And so we have prevented or provided this list of topics, things that we know are coming every year. We know we're going to discuss LCAP and budget in June, and we know we're going to be giving updates on certain programs throughout the year. So the Governance Calendar for 2324 gives us an overview of a guide, knowing that there could be things we might need to change as we're in the school year, but at least gives us kind of a roadmap of what topics will be discussed and when, and bringing this forward for your review and approval.
Perfect, there's no public comment on this? Any board comments? Yes.
Yeah.
Trustee Pasati.
So as I looked through the resolutions, didn't we, so the Transgender Day of Recognition, we ended up doing ours late this year. I don't see it on here in terms of the resolutions. Is that something that we would normally do, or do we only do months? And we would do a resolution for a specific day individually?
I would need to find out more, since this year was the first year-
Yeah, that's why I'm-
-for the resolution, so we would need to go back and find out, is this going to be an annual resolution? Or was this a one-time thing? So my suggestion is, can be two ways. Either we can move forward and go ahead and prove, and if that is a resolution, we can modify, or we can get the information and come back at our July 27 meeting, and then the calendar can be approved at that time. So it is up to the willingness of the board.
Well, I don't want to hold this up for that. So I would say we move forward with that, but I would certainly like to have it on the, maybe next board meeting's agenda. So if you can have the information back by that time, we would be able to, if it is a, if it is a resolution that we can adopt now for recognition in the future, then that would be great, or we could just have kind of a ceremonial thing like the city does. But I'd like us to also, you know, have us recognizing this resolution as well.
We will bring that information back on the July meeting.
All right, thank you.
I think this will be a big help and support as we think about our planning and our own kind of frame of reference, that when we want to bring things forward, too, it's helpful to have the map. There's no public comments? No board comments?
All right, so moved by Trustee Venegas.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Pasati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye, thank you. All right, that now takes us to our Board and Superintendent Comments, Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you. My comments are pretty brief, because it's really about thank you. It's the last meeting of the year, so I want to thank trustees for all of your support for all of the students and families that we serve in the district, your support for our staff, your advocacy for making sure our employees receive the best, so they can bring their best to the students that we serve. So want to acknowledge and thank you for a wonderful year. I want to give a special shout out to Clerk Coffee for finishing her first year as a trustee, and just really appreciate your dedication, willingness to be a learner in this space, and the questions that you ask are, have been very thoughtful, and it's been a pleasure learning together. So look forward to continuing that. For staff, just thank you for everything that you all do, just the energy of positivity, even when things don't always feel positive, or the things that you hear are not always positive. We are definitely a glass half-full group, and that is really what keeps us going when we are together and know that we have the right why, and that will continue to be our focus, and tapping into the why of all of the staff who have the privilege of serving our students, because that's what it is. It's a privilege to serve and to be servant leaders. And so just that opportunity for you all to get some rest. So for many staff in the audience today is their last day, where they'll actually be able tomorrow to sleep late. So it's the little things that, you know, we look forward to. But just want you all to know, those of you who are here, those who are not here, whether it's district staff, or whether it's our staff and all levels at schools, you are appreciated. And I'm so grateful to be here and continue to support of making this an amazing and premier district in our region. And lastly, I want to say thank you to Assistant Superintendent Kamaljeep Panu. This is his last board meeting, and even though I can't see him, I know he's like over there somewhere. It has been such a good two years that I have had the privilege of working with you, your knowledge about human resources and all things that are the umbrella of human resources, and so many things that happen behind the scenes that people don't know what happens in HR. And the way that you have led your team to be a team and to be proud of the work that they do and to recognize that human resources is the humanizing for our district. Like, that is where it starts. Everyone has to go through HR to start in this amazing district. And the welcoming that we receive from you and the team that you have developed, we're grateful for that, and we will miss you. I'll probably still call you, so I'm just putting that out there. But we wish you well, I wish you well in your new role. I think your district is happy to, or should be happy to have you. And how important and wonderful it is- And how important and wonderful it is to be able to be closer to home is a benefit that you probably won't even know how good it is until you're there, and you're able to be closer and spend more time with your family, which is always family first, and WUSD will always be, I hope, what you consider a part of your family. So thank you so much.
All right, Trustee Venegas.
Awesome. Yes, let's make sure you all get some rest. So I'm going to keep it very, very, very short. Yeah, gracias to, to all you educators for, for another year and zero expulsions. Uh, put that on the scoreboard. No, really, thank you for, for dedicating your, your life, your time, and your, your, your energy to, to this community. And Panu, shout out, thank you so much for everything you've done these last few years, and congratulations on your continuous growth. I know I'm going to call you and continue to learn. So, yeah, thank you all, and get some rest.
All right, Trustee Pizzotti.
Thank you. And while you guys all get to go home and have a nice little break, my work life is actually picking up, just in the nick of time. So I've been spending quite a few more hours during my day job, doing more work than I really wanted to. So I hope you guys get a nice rest and come back recharged and just ready to tackle the new year. I'm going to keep this short and sweet, because I'd like to get out of here before nine. I, I would like to say, you know, pretty much ditto to everything that Dr. Hildreth said about Panu, and I would add my two cents that thank you for tolerating me when I can be persnickety about labor issues and be challenging, because I work in a labor environment. Oftentimes, labor and management are combative, and I carry that labor kind of persona with me, and I know what a jerk I can be. So I hope you understand and take away with my apologies and understand. So thank you and congratulations, and good luck in your next, in your next endeavor.
Okay, Clerk Coffee.
Okay, so I wasn't here the last board meeting. I was seriously striving for perfect attendance and honor roll. I wanted that sticker to put on my bumper. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. But I wasn't here because I was spending time with family, visiting the other side, my dad with his, you know, siblings and whatnot. There's a lot. So it's two weeks there. So in that two weeks that I was gone, I missed meeting you for the first time. So clearly, when you saw me in the, in the room, and I was like, I don't know who this person is. That was what that face was about. But welcome, and get ready for some questions, because I have a lot of them. And so, yeah, so just be ready. I don't know a lot, so I'm going to ask a lot. And then when I do know it, I still ask more. So, and with that being said, Panu, thank you so much for dealing with my questions, because I'm like, what about this? What about that? And you have just been putting up with it and have a smile on your face. I'm like, I'm pretty sure I'm striking a nerve here, but it's okay, because I'm smiling, too. But since I didn't get to say it at the last meeting, because I wasn't here, graduations and celebrations, all of that was amazing. That was definitely an experience that I'm used to being on the other side. So being up there and seeing the kids, I shouldn't say kids, I should say young adults, young adults going and now into their new, their new adventures of life. Yeah, that was a first. So it was amazing. So thank you guys all for allowing me to have that experience. So, yeah, that is all that I have. Didn't get that bumper sticker.
All right, there's no committee updates for me, but I think the same sentiment holds true of this time of year. It's time for reflection. It feels a little mean that you keep talking about break, because I know there's people out here that work tomorrow. So I feel like everyone who has to work tomorrow should come in at like 10:00, I think, yeah. But I do want to say I was at lunch today with friends from all over the region who are educators, and it felt so good to say, well, Washington Unified, oh, let me tell you about Washington Unified. Oh, guess what we're doing? And those conversations happen regularly. Of course, there's wonderful things happening in other districts. We want good things happening for kids everywhere. But it's so often that I can share those stories, and I feel like it's, it's really special, what's happening here, and I'm really grateful for that work. I know it's a heavy lift, and our kids benefit, too. I mean, as parents in this district, we choose this district because we believe in it and because of the work that all of you do. And it's very special. So thank you for that. And for Panu, thank you for all you've done. I'm so excited for where this district is going with the diversity. I'm going to say the names wrong, but our new recruitment tools that we have that are really supporting people through the process of credentialing and supporting people through the process of growing into leaders as well, and new roles and spaces. And I want to thank you for, for doing that. And that will remain here. And I know that you will take that lens where you're going, and it's much needed there as well. So the board has a plan for you as well, Superintendent. I will bring that to you for your new office space. Okay, so with that, we are now moving into our future agenda items. I do want to say the Board Study Session on the Brown Act, which will be July or August. We also talked about having our Board Self-Evaluation in our bylaws. It says we'll do that annually, so we should have a discussion about that as well, so that we are evaluating ourselves, just as we know all layers here are evaluated. Then there's the update on the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, which is the CAS on August 2023. And then we have the Board Governance Handbook Study Session, to be determined. We did discuss using a template from another district, or, or, I wouldn't say another district, but models from other places and possibly having a subcommittee. So maybe we'll put that on Board Governance, but just leave it for that discussion for next time. I think that could be a quick discussion with action coming. Any others for future agenda item? Okay, well, with that, you got your wish, and we are done before nine. Have a wonderful evening.